Okay, calling the Winter School Committee to order June 15, 2020 at 6:00 PM. The meeting will be held via Zoom teleconference. Public comment may be submitted prior to the meeting and throughout the meeting to lhoward@winthrop.k12.ma.us. Public comment received will be read at the meeting. Patty, can I please have the roll call?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Here.
Mr. Boncory?
Here.
Mr. Capabianco?
Here.
Mr. Matucci?
Yep.
Miss Swope? Miss Powell?
Present.
Mr. Perrin?
Present. Okay, the meeting will be recorded and may be televised live, which I believe it is. President Boncory, can you lead us in the pledge allegiance? It's your flag.
Oh, absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, let's see. Do we have any public comment this evening? As of yet?
Turn your mic only.
I know what I'm doing, thanks Gus, but...
You're welcome.
As of, as of this moment, I see none.
Okay, moving on to general information or recommendations. There are no delegates in business this evening? So we'll move on to minutes. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes of June 1st, 2020?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Capabianco, seconded by...
Seconded.
President Boncory, any discussion? Hearing none? Patty, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Suzanne, wait, Suzanne's got a comment and she's on mute.
You're on mute, Suzanne.
I'm on mute, Suzanne. You're on mute.
I'm sorry.
Mrs. Swope, we can't hear you after I'm muted.
You okay now?
Was this about the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, I, I did have a couple of questions. I, um, just FYI, I was on the Budget Subcommittee. I didn't see that on my, on the minutes. And secondly, um, on the minutes, that's it.
Um, was that under the Budget Subcommittee report?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I'm just gonna add you as being in attendance?
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, with that amendment, is there any other further discussion? Accepting the minutes as they are with that amendment? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Miss Swope?
Yes.
Miss Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, uh, we have some financial business this evening. Can I get a motion on warrant SBW 20-20 in the amount of $143,346.70?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Miss Powell. Any discussion about the warrant? Hearing none? Can I have a roll call vote, please, Patty?
Yes, Ms. Barry? Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Miss Swope?
Yes.
Miss Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, this evening, we have two payroll warrants, SBW 20-24, the amount of $804,899.09. And also SBW 20-25, the amount of $751,584.92. Uh, can I get a motion on both of them together?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Capabianco. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Miss Swope. Any discussion on the warrants? Hearing none? Patty, can we get a roll call vote for the record?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Dane.
Miss Swope?
Yes.
Miss Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
I'm staying. Okay, we also have a budget transfer this evening in the amount of $284,530.79. Can I have a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Miss Swope?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Boncory. Is there any discussion on the budget transfer? Hearing none? Can I have a roll call vote, please, for the record, Patty?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Miss Swope?
Yes.
Miss Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, building and grounds, none. Uh, general reports, we had a Subcommittee meeting. Mr. Matucci, will you brief us on that, please?
Budget Subcommittee on Friday at 1:30. Just to update everybody where we were this year in the budget and, um, where we're going. I think we're going next year. Pretty hard to tell right now, but we are definitely in good, in good shape this year. Hello? We're definitely in good shape this year. Um, we'll end the year, uh, right on, right on target. And, um, for next year, uh, we need to see how a few things shake out. Um, but things are looking okay and we're just waiting on the town. Um, I think they have a meeting tomorrow night to, uh, see which way they're gonna be going. Um, again, the state, the federal government, uh, still up in the air with everything. So we're just waiting to see what happens. But again, we're, we're in good shape, uh, this year and I think next year we should be okay. Hopefully, and, um, uh, I guess to be announced, uh, at some later date, but, uh, right now, we're doing okay.
Thank you, Mr. Matucci. We also all received an email for a resolution that started on our agenda this evening. Uh, so we'll have it on our next, uh, next meeting, um, for a resolution for full funding, um, for all the cost of the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, so if you could review that, we'll have that on our agenda for our next meeting.
Question?
Sure, go ahead.
Gus, how much money did we save this year going into next year so that we could, um, maybe pay something, um, in expense for next year?
I don't think we have that exact figure right now to where, to where, what that's gonna be. We will save money. Uh, there will be some savings. We're not 100% sure what the amount of the savings are. And certainly, if we did have savings, uh, we would tell the town about it and, um, hopefully, they would allow us, uh, to be able to prepay some, some, uh, things for next year, um, so that we'd be freed up with some money that, uh, we will definitely need next year. Whereas, um, the picture's a little bit bleak as far as revenue from the town, state, because of the, because of COVID-19. So, uh, that number's to be announced. At some point, we'll have that. Um, again, everything shake out by the end of this year. The year does not end until the 30th of June. So we will really won't know until, uh, that point. And then Susan's gonna need to close the year out to find out exactly where we are. But, uh, that number will come out, uh, and there will be savings, just that we just don't know what that, exactly what that number is yet.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, uh, moving on, personnel, Lisa, do we have any appointments, resignations, retirements, postings, or leave of absence?
Superintendent's report?
Yeah, you missed me. I know you wanted to glance right over my...
No, I, I jumped ahead to personnel, I apologize. I'll go back to superintendent's report. Uh, do we have any of those personnel matters?
So I can do the personnel matters, yes. So, um, let me just flip my pages here. So for, for appointments at this particular time, um, I think we discussed this in a prior Subcommittee meeting, perhaps. Um, Susan Eccles, um, has asked to hold off on her retirement this year, um, given the circumstances that we're in, um, with onboarding a, um, school business manager. Um, Susan has, uh, asked if she could stay on, uh, to help us through that process. Uh, we started looking, um, searching and posting for a business manager. Right about the time we closed, uh, the application pool, um, was not, was not great. Um, the other, uh, piece of this is if Susan were to stay on, uh, for the remainder of the FY21 school year, it would allow us a cost savings that we would be able to, um, then put towards any, uh, budget shortfall we have for FY21. So it is...
Thanks, Susan.
Yes, it is my, um, strong recommendation, if I could cut well right now, I would do so, that we allow Susan to, um, not retire at the end of this, uh, school year, uh, September, which was her, her original plan, uh, to be able to stay on with us throughout the school year during which time...
Your phone's ringing, Goldie.
We will be bringing on, um, and reposting for that position for the following school year. It will allow us time also to, uh, have somebody transition in, in, during a time where they could physically be present within the school and work with Susan, uh, as part of that transition plan. Uh, so I bring that to your attention, uh, as one of, um, one of our personnel matters. Uh, if there are no questions on that, I have a few more. Um, we have no resignations at this time. Um, I'm happy to report and will report out in a little bit more detail when I have time to do, uh, a study of, uh, the retention of staff members. Um, we've seen improvement in that area to be able to hold on to the staff members that we, uh, bring onboard. Uh, so no resignations at this time, no additional retirements to report. In terms of posting, um, all with the positive vision of school opening in the fall. We are posting middle school stipend positions. Those are positions that our teachers apply for, for the fall. The ILT, which is the Instructional Leadership Team for Special Education, and our STEM Club. Those are two postings. High school nurse is a position that, um, was open last school year. Uh, we filled that with substitute teachers, uh, I'm sorry, substitute nurses for the school year, uh, which reflected some savings in the budget. Uh, we will not be able to do that for next school year, uh, given, uh, what we will need for nursing staff. We want to fill that position, um, fully. So posting it now and being able to recruit, uh, nurses, uh, will be definitely beneficial. So that will fill the high school position. That's not an increase in the budget. That is, uh, something, a budget line item that has been in there, um, all of last year as well. All of the middle school stipended positions, again, are for the school year, the team leaders, the drama advisors, uh, the like. You can see there are several, about, about 20 of them. So we'd like to post those in anticipation of the opening. And for athletics, middle school, uh, cross-country coach, there are two positions that will be open for the fall. So we would like to post all of those. And presently, we have no requests, um, for a leave of absence. However, uh, as we move forward, um, that may become more of a reality for those folks who will not be able to rejoin us in the fall, um, if there are COVID-related, uh, issues in, in their family, um, or other extenuating circumstances related to COVID or something else. Uh, we'll be reaching out to our staff with a survey, once we know how we're gonna be opening schools, to get a, a sense of what that may look like for the fall, so that we can plan for that in the summer. And that is all I have for personnel.
Okay, moving on to superintendent's report, Ms. Howard?
Yeah, so superintendent's report, um, I have a, uh, a draft of a health and safety, uh, guideline for the reopening of the public school. I say it is in draft form. It's something that I've been working on, uh, for several weeks with my leadership team. Uh, I don't know, Jen, if you can just post it, uh, share the screen to let folks know what it looks like. I will provide you with a copy of this. I was working on it, um, until late last night, uh, and it still needs to be, um, tweaked. However, this is sort of a snapshot of what it, um, looks like. Jen, if you can just maybe scroll to one or two slides, um, just to give folks an idea of the enormity of the document, um, and the importance of the development of the document. It is to prepare to reopen the schools, um, and it is a, uh, something that I will share with, um, the community and the school committee. Um, it, it takes a lot of time to go through this. We'd like to finalize it first. Talks about the health and safety, uh, of our students and sort of walks us step by step, uh, through the preparedness, uh, process for getting our schools ready to be open. I believe I was at page 34 as of last night. Um, the document itself, once it, it comes out in draft form, will be used as a guide, uh, for us as an entire school district, uh, to open our schools. We felt really strongly that we needed, um, to have a template and to have a guiding document to help really structure our discussions, as well as, um, to formulate our teams that we're building. So we have a return-to-school task force that we have put together, um, and just as an update of where we're at. Like, again, I will share this, once it's not in draft form any longer, um, I will share it with the committee as a sort of a separate meeting, because it will take some time to go through. Um, and where we're at in the task force, uh, process is, uh, our facilities management task force team and our nursing and healthcare task force team and our leadership task force team have all met and started, um, the process of going through and evaluating each one of our schools and using the guiding document that the Department of Education put out for the summer reopening, which is definitely going to be different than the fall reopening. But we are pretty clear that the safety guidelines around, um, taking student temperatures, structuring our classroom with social distance, uh, guidance, uh, the signage that we will need, the, um, training that teachers will require in terms of some simplistic and then some, uh, deeper training. So simplistic would be, um, hand washing and, and the teaching of hand washing specifically for our students, PPE wearing. So what protective, uh, gear does a teacher need to wear while teaching or while cleaning the materials in their classrooms? Um, all of those types of things are, are now being looked at from the facilities and the nursing standpoint in an evaluation mode. Uh, we will be checking these lists off, but we felt strongly that we had to put this document together to give us just sort of a game plan and not to be all over the map. Many of the activities that will be taking place with the additional task force, uh, groups that we build around curriculum, around the remote learning plan, um, and, and alike, those things will be, uh, building-specific. And that will be, staff will be incorporated in that. We haven't gotten to the point where we've decided how wide we're gonna expand those, um, task force groups. Um, but I can envision community members, perhaps school committee members, uh, definitely teachers, uh, to become part of those various teams within the buildings. Mind you, this is 34 pages of work that needs to be, and is not complete, but needs to be done, uh, between now and the opening of schools. Uh, so there is lots to be done. Um, I will provide you with this draft, a hard copy, so that you can see it. And when we finalize it, we will post it to the school's website, uh, so that parents can have an understanding, uh, of the breadth of work that is being done between now and the last several weeks, but moving forward to get our schools open safely.
Lisa, do you have dates for summer and, and regular opening?
So right now, um, schools, yep, that's gonna jump right into my, um, next discussion on, um, the, the task force. So, so the dates for the summer programming, um, the commissioner and the CDC put together guidelines for reopening of schools in the summer. And you have to have all of these, um, sort of must-do things in place within your schools in order to open the doors. Uh, our task force right now is, is doing that assessment of our building. We're ordering PPE, we're ordering, um, signage and, and structuring of our classrooms. Um, it is doubtful, not just in Winthrop, but in several communities, if not the majority of, of communities, that opening fully for the summer is almost impossible, given the enormous task of, of having your school buildings ready. As of today, uh, we are not planning, uh, to open our school buildings for summer programming for our students. We're looking at continuing remotely, um, and, and certainly tweaking the remote services that we provide. The entitled program, the only program in the Winthrop Public Schools that's a required summer program is our special education programs. Um, if we can't open for our special education programs, it would be impossible to open for other programs, um, given a, a whole host of, uh, circumstances in that, uh, the entitled program, those are the students that have the rights through their IEPs, uh, to go to school in the summer and receive those services. So we have to make sure we can open for them first. If we can, and, and we get to a point that we can't open the buildings, we would then switch from a fully remote, uh, summer program to either a hybrid version with some remote and some in-person. Uh, but we're just not there yet. Uh, PPE is, is the biggest ticket. Uh, the Department of Education put out, uh, sort of a, a, a plan that you can use to determine how much PPE you need. And when, in determining it in a school, it's not just a mask for every child, but it's, um, what type of mask, what type of gown. Uh, at the lower elementary level, we do diaper changes, G-tube feedings, um, some, uh, vent clearing, uh, and, and you have to have certain barrels. Make sure you have those in stock and placed appropriately around the school. Um, hand sanitizer, every so many feet has to be, uh, installed and ready to be used. Just the lines on the floor in terms of what direction students can walk, uh, when they can come out of a classroom. The bathrooms have to be somewhat redesigned. And the most important and critical, uh, piece of the restructuring of the buildings is every nursing station has to have a secondary room separate and distinct from the nurse's office in which students or staff who are presenting with any COVID symptoms can be isolated. Um, and with isolation, obviously comes, uh, supervision when it's students, to be able to supervise them until the nurse can, can get in there. So there are policies, um, not necessarily policies, but procedures that have to also be drafted for every one of those safety, uh, precautions. We're hopeful that when, uh, the Department of Education comes out with its next guidance, that it'll have some preliminary protocols that we'll be able to use. We've, um, taken a bunch from CDC and we've looked at back-to-school plans in many other states, uh, in which those protocols, uh, have been designed. So we're borrowing a lot of protocols in the event that mask does not provide those, um, for us. So then with the reopening of schools for the fall, to answer that question, um, the Department of Education is going to be coming out, uh, this week, is what we're told, with their plan, uh, for reopening schools in Massachusetts. And the, um, prescriptive side of that is gonna be what the schools have to do, um, with some flexibility, depending on your community. Uh, and it's sort of, it's what, it's what's holding us back, uh, in our planning process, although we are, uh, planning as much as we possibly can for what we know we're going to have to do. I, we're expecting that guidance this week. Last time, we were told to expect guidance during the week. It came at Fri-, on a Friday at 8:25 in the evening, um, which was very difficult. But we are set up next week, uh, for administrative meetings to sit down and review that guidance immediately. Um, we've already had, uh, a, sort of an indication of how we might be coming back. So we've done some surface work on what that might look like, um, but it is extremely overwhelming, um, to plan for something that you don't know what you're planning for. Uh, so we're very hopeful that that information will be out tonight. I'm sorry, this week.
Did they give a date, though?
No, they said the week of the 15th. And today's the 15th, and I've checked my email probably 28 times today, um, but no date. It will be before the end of the week, uh, that I do know. There is, um, extreme, uh, pressure, I think, and, and feedback going to the Department of Education. The summer guidance that came out, um, folks, it, took a look at that and envisioned that to be what the fall was gonna look like, uh, for public schools, which is, um, almost impossible to, uh, be able to pull off. And so I believe the Department of Education received a great deal of pushback from the Superintendent's Association, as well as the Mass Teachers Association, um, on something that looks virtually, for lack of a better term, uh, impossible.
Will there be an online option for those coming back in the fall?
So as in remote learning designed by the public school? Is that what you, is that what you're asking? I, I, yeah, I, I don't think we ever have, I don't think we'll ever go away from having remote learning as a, as an option, um, district-wide for, you know, such things as simplistic as a snow day. I don't know that we'll ever have another snow day, because we now have the capabilities of providing remote instruction. Um, I, I would say that, you know, based on what I'm hearing, that there will be remote learning and in-person learning. It's just what is that going to be looking like in the state of Massachusetts? We're hearing that it's gonna be a model that's, uh, put out by the state. The remote learning piece will be, um, we heard some, uh, feedback that there may be a state remote learning model, um, meaning they would be providing a platform for, for remote instruction, as opposed to the, the airplane that we just built of remote learning. Um, we feel strongly and, and from the feedback we've received, uh, from parents and, and just collaborating with other districts, um, others feel if we were to go back fully remote, um, that we would need to be more synchronous in our remote learning strategies, um, and, uh, be able to collect more information from students, be able to grade students K to 12. Uh, there's a, there's a lot involved in terms of, uh, improvement in, um, really, uh, making it fit your community and, and not be, um, bound by the restrictions of the Department of Education, if that's the way it would go. I don't, uh, if I was a betting person, I'd bet that these are coming out on Friday, uh, of this week. Um, however, I wish I knew exactly what they were gonna be sending us, but sort of about 310 other superintendents in the Commonwealth. So we're all on the same page with that.
Okay.
Um, so that task force, uh, document is, is our guide, and again, I can share that with you further. Couple of other, um, items, uh, easy school enroll. Jen, I don't know if you can throw up the kindergarten registration process? If you could throw that up. So this is something that right, um, at, in the midst of all that was happening with the closure of school, we had been working on this with our, uh, student information, uh, portal, which is Harris and IPASS, to make things easier for parents across, um, the community and, and enrolling their children in school, as well as all those forms that we all get every year to revise your child's healthcare information, the emergency telephone numbers, your email address. Our goal is to get that all online. Uh, kindergarten registration was the biggest. I put this document together and it went live today, and I'm super excited about it, uh, because now our kindergarten families can do, uh, contactless, uh, enrollment of their students. That wasn't the plan from the beginning. The word contactless wasn't something that we were thinking about. This was more of a document, uh, or an ability for parents to easily enroll their students in school into a system that connects with IPASS, which is the same system that connects with the Department of Education and all the data that we provide, which directly, um, ties to the funding we receive. So this is accuracy of documentation, uh, both in just people's names and email addresses for us to easily reach parents and have accurate documentation, but also in terms of our numbers and how we communicate with, uh, the State Department of Education across the board. This is our first run at, um, online enrollment. Uh, we'll see how it goes. We also had a, um, a video to go along with this. Jillian Toland, who's one of our, uh, teachers, who through this process of, of remote learning, uh, platform building. We have identified people who are very talented with technology. So, boy, Jillian showed me her talent, and the next thing you knew, she was building this remote, um, enrollment site and, uh, videos for our parents to be able to help walk them through the process. So this is exciting for us, um, as now, once this kindergarten registration piece rolls out, if it goes well, we will do, be doing, uh, new student registration and our re-enrollment registration, as well as other documents that we ask people, uh, to check at the beginning of the school year. Um, they can now do that online, and it will make the process, uh, more accurate, uh, and easier for parents to access. And it'll also take a lot of work off the plates of our secretaries. So when they get these forms back at the beginning of the year, they have to translate them from the paper. Uh, it takes time out of the classroom for the teachers to collect them. All of those things, uh, will be no more. So we're excited about that. We will be posting, uh, on WCAT and, um, you know, we had for me to say the winter transcript for a whole host of reasons. transcript for a whole host of reasons, so we might stay away from that, but our website, as well as WCAT to inform our parents, some of who don't have children in school as of yet, that the awaited kindergarten enrollment form process is now live. Couple of other quick items. I will send you a copy, a copy of my superintendent report because it is somewhat lengthy. I want you to be able to see the upcoming high school events for class night, senior breakfast, graduation rehearsal. Matt Crombie, the principal, is communicating all this with the parents. They are well aware. But in my report, I will send you the dates of those things so that you can see them. I've been peppering you a little bit with videos and letters that we've been receiving from parents regarding the closing of school, their understanding of what it's like to be a teacher now, some of the videos of all the neat things we've been doing at the end of the school year. Car parades for the fifth grade was awesome on Friday. Lots of tears from teachers and kids and parents. And then our, I stood out with the kindergarten pre-K to two drive-by, in which all of our parents brought their students in their own vehicles or walking to the school, to the Port Banks, and drove by, and all of our staff was standing outside. It was a beautiful day until about five minutes or two, when the parade started, and it was torrential downpours from two o'clock until three oh five. So nothing new for the people that stand in the loop. You know, it was definitely new for me. It was a bad hair day. I wore a plastic bag for a little bit of time, which was fun, but that was another great, another great event. We've been getting some feedback from parents that I wanted to update you on. Over the past few weeks, we've heard from several parents and students who've expressed interest in learning how we're approaching or have approached teaching of topics such as cultural proficiency, anti-discrimination, social justice, equity, anti-racism, and many other very important topics that are in our forefront and extremely important to a variety of our parents and our staff. I've received those emails from staff as well, talking about thoughts about how we can address some of these very important topics. We've also received questions from families and staff related to the diversity of our hiring practices, which is certainly a topic that I haven't discussed with families before. So I was interested, it was interesting to see that there was, you know, concern or at least needing some feedback on that. Interest in cultural responsive teaching practices, and what do we do about that, curriculum practices, and much, much more. These are all great topics. They speak to our strategic plan in the third year of a three, of a four-year plan, or the fourth year of a four-year plan. So we're taking all that information in. I'm responding as much as I can. I receive sometimes over a hundred and twenty-five emails a day on various topics, whether it's remote learning, or parents just looking for feedback, or agencies looking to sell me gloves. And those come fast and furious. Sometimes I miss things, and I wouldn't be human if I didn't. I read things, and sometimes I think I responded and find out that they're sitting in my drafts. I'm really trying to pay attention to them, but there are a lot of them. So in looking at this flood of really interesting emails, and I want to say they're supportive. So there are parents and students and families and staff members that are reaching out to me. And they're not reaching out in a negative way. They're reaching out in a super positive way, asking important questions and wanting to know what can we do to help. Is there anything we can do to help you look at these practices, to help you plan for the future? Can we give you some feedback? And I think it's critically important for me, as a superintendent in the Winthrop Public Schools, to hear what my parents are feeling, our parents are feeling. And they speak for their children, who sometimes cannot speak for themselves or may not be able to articulate what they're really concerned about. So in meeting with my leadership team, we do a curriculum review every year as part of a civil rights, our civil rights documentation. So right now, we're in the process of focusing in on the structures and the tools that we're using within our classrooms and reviewing that, looking at our own professional staff development, all around equity in our practice. As part of the review, we are also going to be looking at the current opportunities that we use to teach anti-discrimination, anti-bias, cultural proficiency, what professional development practices we have around unconscious bias, which was a big ticket item for me last year, and our culturally responsive teaching practices. This is going to be a different review. We're in the early stages of planning it. I'll be meeting so far with one parent, but hope to expand that a little bit more to get the feedback from those folks. I have a staff group that is going to be meeting to get together and talk about what type of look and evaluation they would like to have, grade level by grade level. And I, you know, I just think it's super important to be mindful that these are things we need to revisit. These are things we need to look at, and we do need the feedback from our community partners, as well as our staff, to see where we can tweak things or add things or adjust things as the world around us tweaks and adjusts every day. So I think that's exciting. As of the moment, we're calling it our Equity Curriculum and Professional Development Review Team. I do believe we'll be changing that title. As more feedback comes to me from our parents, it opens our eyes to some things that we may not have been thinking about. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that. More to come on that. Yes?
I just want to know when we are going to hear what the responses were from the questionnaire that you sent out.
In about an eighth of a second, when I have Ms. Jen Powell pull that right up.
Thank you.
So I would like to do a, probably when we have additional time, perhaps at our next meeting, I just wanted to show you where we were at as of last Thursday. It closed on Friday. I will share this out with you along with the superintendent report and the draft of the reopening plan so that we can have further discussion at our next meeting or presentation on both. This is just a snapshot of some of the answers. We had, I believe, six hundred and sixteen responses as of my last check on Thursday. I will be finalizing these responses for our next meeting, so folks can take a look at it. Some things that were interesting to me, communication was huge because we want to make sure that our communication overall is being received by parents, and it is helpful. So we had communication that I received from my student school related to remote learning is clear. Fifty percent of our families strongly agreed with that. Thirty-two percent agreed, thirteen percent disagreed. So we have to dig that deeper. We can get the individual responses from these parents because there was a section of this where they could give us those responses. To me, surveys are useless if you just collect the information and then you don't talk about it with the people who are behind the communication and behind the leadership of these. So this will be a topic of our leadership meeting in July. Other important things, like stress level of families. We had forty, forty-five percent of our families were somewhat stressed. We had a handful of our folks who were extremely stressed. Those are important things to gauge what we will be focusing in on with our families and our students in the fall. Other important things, the technology piece and families' food situations. The family food situation, being part of the EOC and the Food Bank and collaborating with Mia Moray and the Food Bank and our own amazing lunchroom staff all summer. It was very interesting to me that eighty-nine percent of our families, eighty-nine point four, did not need support around food. But there's still the rest of that population that did, and I believe we serviced that population well. It was interesting that we only had an average of ten families accessing school lunches during the time of our closure. So we did want to dig that a little bit further, and that survey has helped us. We will be conducting multiple surveys over the next couple of weeks with our families and our staff about the return to school. Once we know what we're asking them to return to, we're going to ask them if they're comfortable with that. And it's sort of a point to ask them if they're comfortable returning to school if we don't know how they're returning, whether it's a hybrid model, whether it's fully in school. And that will gauge our understanding of how many kids are going to be returning and what plans we might need to put in place for those who are not returning. So like I said, I'd like, I'd like to take this data back to my leadership team. I was amazed that we had that many responses, so I was pleased with that. We have nineteen-hundred-and-eighty-seven students in our school, and to have over six hundred responses is a pretty good survey response. So I'm hoping for the same in the work that we're going to be doing moving forward. And I think, long-winded as that was, there's a lot going on. It's hard to be brief during this time. But I will share this information out with you, including my superintendent's report, so that you are able to see where we're headed. And I think that may be it to me.
Thank you, Superintendent Howard. Moving on to new business, we have the 2020, 2021 school committee meeting dates. It should have been in your packet. Does anyone have any issues with the dates that are set?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm sorry, I missed that paper, but my only request is if there's a meeting the first Monday in November, we postpone it to the second Monday of November.
I believe it is the first Monday of November.
And what's that date?
The ninth.
I think that's the second Monday.
Okay, then we should be fine. That's the ninth.
Then we're fine. Thank you.
Okay, hearing no objections. Can I get a motion to accept the 2020, 2021 meeting schedule?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Powell, seconded by Mr. Capabianco. Any discussion? Hearing none? Can we have a roll call vote, please, Patty?
Yes. Ms. Barry? Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Matucci?
Yes.
Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes. Okay, moving on to other new business, naming facilities policy. We're going to send that back down to the Policy Review Committee. We've received a number of requests over the last few months. At this point, we're on a moratorium to not name anything for one year, but we're going to bring it back to the Policy Committee, review it, and then report back to the full committee. Okay, unfinished business. Ms. Powell was working on the second reading, adoption of revised homeschooling. I received an email from Suzanne Swol. Suzanne, that is in the actual rewritten and proposed policy. It's under number five for extracurricular activities. That is there.
Thank you.
So I'll turn it over to Ms. Powell to bring it forward.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to waive the second reading of the homeschooling policy revision.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion on the homeschooling policy? Bearing in mind that number five was added extracurricular activities, sort of the same language for both.
So just to reiterate, this would allow students who are homeschooled, who have an approved curriculum and who are paying the regular fees to participate in sports and activities at their grade levels.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? Can I have a roll call vote, please, Patty, on the homeschooling policy?
Yes. Ms. Barry? Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Capabianco?
Yes.
Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swol?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Perrin?
Yes. Okay, moving on. Do we have any public comment this evening, Lisa, that's been received?
I'm just double-checking one last time. I do not have any email public comment.
Do we have any public relations coming forward? Ms. Barry, do you have any? You're on mute.
No, not today.
So you're good. Ms. Powell, do you have any?
I just want to give a shout out to the fifth grade parade. I wasn't expecting it and was amazed to see fire trucks and creative cars and a lot of enthusiasm passing by the house. It was exciting for them to be able to usher it in a little bit.
Absolutely. Ms. Swol, do you have anything this evening?
No.
Okay. Mr. Capabianco, do you have anything?
No.
Mr. Matucci?
All set.
Mr. Boncory, President Boncory?
Yes, just want to let everybody know that all of the restaurants in town are now open for outside dining. It opened on Friday evening, and they were very successful over the weekend, which thank God, some things are half back to normal. I just want everybody to stay safe. Remember, we're still wearing masks and we're still social distancing. So stay safe, please.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Matucci, seconded by Mr. Capabianco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call, roll call.
Exactly. Roll call vote, please, Patty.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Perrin?
Stay. Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it.
Good night, all.
Talk to you next week.
Good night, all.